To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roke.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval minutes?
We have no minutes tonight.
Correspondence.
We just have one correspondence from Ag and Marketing. It's the Municipal Shelter Inspection Report for Port Jervis on February 18th, 2020.
Received and filed. For the good of the city, Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to ask Orlando Mendoza, Alicia Moreno, and Anthony Moreno to come up along with the representatives of the Walk Hill Fire Company. Come on up. You know, in politics, we, there are times that we have an opportunity to do something good, I mean, real good. And tonight is one of those opportunities in partnership with the Walk Hill Fire Company and hopefully the greater Middletown community. This is about Sky Mendoza. Sky was born on June 8th, 2004, to Orlando Mendoza and LaShanta Brown. At the early age of two years old, Sky was fortunate to have gained another mother named Jennifer Perisella. Sky and Jennifer bonded as a mother and daughter and also became best friends along the way. As she grew up, Sky became a great softball player and was active in chorus and other school activities. On November 17th, 2018, Sky went with her mom, Jennifer, to New York City to work on a farm stand. This was the last weekend Jen was to work as she was pregnant with Sky's soon-to-be brother Noah. Sky had previously lost her brother Liam, who was born prematurely on October 26th, 2017. Early that morning, on their way down to the city, they were in a car accident. Not just any car accident, it was an accident that forever changed many lives. Jennifer passed away at the scene of the accident. Sky's younger brother Orlando broke his collarbone. Sadly, Jennifer, the baby Noah, also passed away in Jen's belly. Sky was in the backseat, covered and unconscious for 22 minutes. Her younger brother told paramedics his sister was still alive in the van. Once the paramedics found her, they worked tirelessly to bring her back to life. Once at Lincoln Hospital in New York City, the doctors came in and told the family that the severity of Sky's, about the severity of Sky's condition. She would never walk again, and if she woke up, she would be brain-dead. As the days went by, Sky proved them wrong. She woke up blinking her eyes to commands and started to move her lips, asking for her mom. At this point, the only thing to do was to tell her the truth. As tears rolled down her face, she continued to fight for her life. Even with a setback, she remained positive. She was transferred to St. Margaret's Rehab Center in Albany. Although St. Margaret's is far away, of these two hours, not a night went by that Sky was left alone. Family members traveled to be with her throughout her healing process. Being away from her home in her own room is hard for Sky. Her only wish is to come back to Middletown, New York, where all of her friends and family are located. We have been fortunate to play a role as the city of Middletown in this opportunity and effort to bring Sky back to Middletown. And after consultation with our Corporation Council and clearing this through our legal department, the city is in a position to do just that and assist the family in bringing Sky home. We are asking the community and others to help us reach the goal that has set the city of Middletown under myself and you as the members of the Common Council, President Rodriguez. We have the authorized tonight, we can authorize tonight, the transfer of a vacant piece of property at 52 Broad Street to the Sky Mendoza Supplemental Needs Trust. The property is currently vacant land that a new house can be built upon. In order to move this project forward, the Walk Hill Engine Company Number Six of the Middletown Fire Department has raised $13,485 to begin the construction, or to move towards the construction of this house. However, we still need help in order to reach the goal of $130,000 for the construction costs. You could help by donating funds to the Sky Mendoza Supplemental Needs Trust, a trust set up to help build this new home for Sky with a pink room just for her. This home will be handicap accessible, obviously. Sky's needs are tremendous, but nothing will be, will make her happier than bringing her back to the city. This has all been set up. I know Orlando's boss, we have met with the family, and Alicia, who is on the screen there. The Supplemental Needs Trust has been established by Cowen Labarra and Langfordan LLP out of Chester, New York, a law firm. And all funds will go towards this project that are donated. So we're here tonight to not only authorize the transfer of the property, it has passed the Board of Estiment last week. We're here also tonight to kick off the opportunity for our community to step forward and community, people in the greater Middletown community, to step forward and help bring Sky back to Middletown. So we'd like to begin with a presentation of the check from the Walk Hill Fire Company to the Sky Mendoza Supplemental Needs Trust on behalf of Sky to begin this project. So, Mr. Reed, are you going to come up and handle?
Good evening. I'd like to first thank Mayor Di Stefano, President Rodriguez, members of the council for having us here tonight. Each year, we do a golf outing to help someone in the community. We've been here before a couple of times, helping out the community for different reasons. Besides doing our golf outing this year, we did a tricky tray. We had two teachers from the Middletown School District. One of them is here tonight. We put together a tricky tray. We had that tapped. Went well, very well, I should say. So between the golf outing and the tricky tray, as the mayor mentioned, we raised $13,485. So on behalf of the Walk Hill Engine Company Number Six, the Father Ken Newquist Golf Outing, I'd like to present this check to the family.
We'd like to have Alicia, who really was the one who spearheaded this whole campaign. And we'll prob, as you see on the screen, she's also one of the contact people for any information that's required or anything necessary from people. But we want to assure people that this is not only a good thing for us to do, it's an important thing for us to do as a community, to rise above, not above, but to do the right thing and bring this young lady back home. So Alicia is the one who came and met with us, and although we were excited about it from the beginning, it was somewhat of a slow process because of legal issues, and she didn't let the lawyers rest at all. So Alicia, you want to say a few words, please?
Do I have Sky on the phone?
Dave?
I don't know, was she on the phone? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for all your time. And Sky was supposed to be on FaceTime right now because she wanted to say, oh, she's on. She wanted to say thank you for this opportunity and for wanting to help bring me home. If you, you won't be able to see her because we don't have a big enough screen, but by reading her lips, that's what she also states. And I just want everyone to be assured that it's our main priority. It's been a main purpose to try to get her to come back to Middletown, where she grew up and was born. And it's a goal, and I just believe that it's going to happen, and I want to thank you for your time and your effort. And Maria, thank you so much for the constant emails back and forth, and thank you especially to the fire company and the teacher who set up everything at TAPD and the golf course thing. I'm just nervous, but thank you again, okay?
Great job.
Like she said, thank you to everybody, the mayor, the fire department, teachers, you guys in front of us, family, friends. Just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
So let's bring Sky home. Mr. Massey is going to make the first check donation to you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
For the good of the city, anyone else?
Among other things, I represent the Middletown Pride Committee. To Mayor Di Stefano, President Rodriguez, the members of the Common Council, thank you for your support in the past, and I look forward to another year of support from everybody. Fellow citizens of this wonderful city, I'd like to talk to you. In the winter of 2019 to '20, we lucked out with not much snow, but it seemed like litter took its place. Since 2011, I've been involved with the passion of trying to keep Middletown clean. It has been a hard job, but it's been a rewarding job because I've had so many people who have joined the cause, from the council, the mayor, Maria and her group, members of the Middletown School District, many churches, all of the high school teams have been involved. And we call this the Middletown Pride Committee. And the whole idea of pride is to bring back what you would like to see Middletown like. Middletown is booming. Middletown is a new city. Middletown is, as the mayor said, on the move. I've had a chance to go downtown and have lunch with my daughter in the new restaurant. It's, I mean, just all the wonderful things. The Woolworth Building is an amazing part of Middletown now. The ugly part that has not completely changed, to me, is just the disrespect that some people have when they open their window and drive by and throw out what should stay in their car until they come to their house and throw it away. So I'd like to invite everybody to join us as we celebrate the spring that will be coming soon on April 18th, a Saturday, at Festival Square, 100 yards from here, in our wonderful city where the Christmas tree is, where the summer concerts are. Join us and gather so we can clean Middletown up. We will outfit you with a new shirt for the spring. We will give you the use of a grabber. We will ask you to fill a garbage pal with litter, or garbage bag with litter. We will give you a sticker to identify that this belongs to the group that's going to clean Middletown. So when you leave Festival Square with the group that Chris Brinkerhoff, our driver of the Middletown bus from Mid-City Transit, giving us the use of their bus, you will be given many bags, and you can fill them all and leave them on a corner, and then make sure we know where the corner is. And Mr. Tuile's group will come by and pick them up. We will also give you gloves. I'm not sure which ones we'll give you this year. They may not, they may not look like this, but they will be gloves to protect your hands. Okay? We hope that we have the support of everybody in Middletown School District, families, friends, civic groups. We look forward to a wonderful day, and we thank all the people who've done it in the past, and we look forward to a wonderful day, April 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. And we thank the Little League for moving their parade forward so that they can help us participate. We thank the Middletown School District. We thank everybody that has ever participated. The Common Council has been so supportive, and I thank the mayor for everything that he's done in the past. The Middletown firefighters, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, Middletown Police Department has been amazing. Commissioner Tuile has been very supportive. The school principals, the teachers, and the students, kudos to you. Thank you. The Middletown Brownies, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and the athletic teams have been so amazing when they've donned a yellow shirt on top of their midi blue. I'd like to also thank the members of the Middletown Pride Committee. I am one, and you make it many, and I thank you. John Alderman Kleiner, Alderman Massey, Chris Brinkerhoff, and the other people, I just cannot think of their names right now. With the upgrades to the city of Middletown, north, south, east, and west, let's make sure that we keep the Middletown pride going. Let's keep it clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Any one else we'd like to address the council? Okay, moving on to department heads. Police chief?
Good evening. I have nothing this evening unless you have any questions for me.
Any question for the police chief?
Thank you.
Chief? Fire chief?
Good evening, everybody. Been a busy month since January 26th, I think, was our first fire on Stanton. That was a second alarm. Then we had 264 East Main Street on, whatever day it was, the 8th, that was a four-alarm fire, a lot of mutual aid there. And then we had Smith Street on the 20th, and that also went to a four-alarm fire. No injuries at any of the calls. Everyone involved, citizens or fire wise, there were no injuries, so that's always a good thing. I just wanted to bring, over the last couple of months, I've been asking for numerous things for the department, and I just want to thank you that you've come through with everything. These are the tablets that we use in the cars, that we, we do our reports that go right to the state. I just did a two-hour webinar with the company tonight, along with the other chiefs, just to get more familiar with the system, and it's working great. It's a time saver for us to do them on the scenes, so just want to say thank you.
Any question for the fire chief? Thank you, chief. Maria?
We had our CDA meeting tonight, our audit, and approval to move forward on two more homes. So we're looking forward to those projects getting underway and, you know, all's, working with the Mendoza family and Alicia, you know, let's bring Sky home. And thank you, mayor and city council, for, you know, making this happen tonight and the fire department, and get it started. So again, let's bring Sky home. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. Recreation?
I'll agree with Maria. The Mendoza family has been a staple in this community for generations, and it's been a pleasure working with the parents' children and working with their children. And I hope our community steps up and helps the family that is well-deserving of it. Sue, with the Middletown Pride, we do have gloves, we do get pickers, we have the t-shirts ordered, we're ready to rock and roll. John and I have been in communication, so we'll be ready for Sue's meeting. And as always, we have a huge turnout on April 18th this year for the city pride cleanup. The school groups and the youth groups all around the town already know about it, so we're hoping for a good turnout. That will also be Little League's parade that day, too, just so you have it on your calendar. They're moving the parade back to noon, so that's going to be an active day in the city for the community. The Lions Club, earlier, we had a rec committee meeting. I want to thank the Lions Club. They're always giving us donations, just like a lot of other clubs in the city. They're going to be, once again, doing a project to enhance our parks. The Walk Hills are here tonight. They have helped us in the past, and it takes a village, and the people in this town really step up and help all the time, and that's what makes it another great place to live. The new facility that the city closed on, I don't want to take away the mayor's thunder, he'll probably be talking about it a little, but the guys over there are working really hard. We are working on the programming end of that. That is going to be an exciting place. It is an incredible facility. We're going to be able to do more programming for young toddlers, because right now, we really don't have the facility for it. We're also going to be, do more programmings for our seniors, our young seniors, that want to go play pickleball and volleyball and basketball. So while the kids are in school, since the facility's so big and two separate buildings, we can have preschool going in one spot and adults in another spot. So what the guys have done over there is incredible. You get a chance to sneak in there when the guys over there work and take a look. But they're making a correctional facility into a recreational facility, and it's going to be great. Spring registration is up, folks. It's going to close out soon, so make sure you jump on our programs. We have all our traditional programs running. We have added spring basketball because of demand. We have the kids' cooking clinics. We have two coming up in the spring. We had one in the winter. We have art classes coming up for three different age groups now, and we're starting double Dutch. The teens will be using the teen center area for double Dutch, but we had a big response of adults. And the adults will be using the gym at the new facility starting tomorrow night. So we're already putting that to use, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Any question for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Don?
I have nothing particular this evening, other than just to tell everybody, the first week in April, the outside audit will start for last year. And other than that, if you have any questions.
Any question for Don? Thank you, Don. Jacob?
Good evening, council president, mayor, council members. Part of our work in DPW is to make sure that our water distribution system, although it is relatively old, that it is in good shape and we're not losing too much water. So Orange County Water Authority have given us a grant to survey by specialty firm half of our distribution system, and the other half, the city has paid for it. And that leak detection will be concluded tomorrow about midday. So that's all done for our annual leak detection. Again, it's a professional outfit that comes in with sophisticated equipment. They are trained to do this much better than what we do ourselves, because that's what they do for a living. They found really very little leaks. I mean, we attended to them immediately. There is only one leak, as a matter of fact, and the second leak, we're going to be attending to tomorrow morning at the psychiatric center. And they were able to find the leak before the water even came out, came out of the ground, which is how we usually find our leaks. So it was a very successful operation. We'll get the report, we'll go through it. If there's any more from our side to be done, we will do it. Water distribution system annual flushing will start March 16th. Please visit our website. As usual, we're going to start with the third ward first, second, first, and fourth. That's all weather permitting. Hopefully, the weather will be cooperating with us, and we will move fast, and we will be able to start on the 16th. If it was freezing weather on the 16th, for whatever reason, then it's going to be pushed back, because we can't be flushing water on the, on the, on the streets while it's frozen, while the ground is frozen, or temperature is freezing. Again, visit our website, please, and there's going to be an ad in the paper regarding this. Yard waste pickup, the annual pickup is going to start on April 6th. I know the weather is nice. Council president, he conveyed his wishes to start it sooner, so we still have to hire the personnel, the part-timers, who are going to be picking up the yard waste. So we're going to try our best to do what we can, but April 6th is going to be the official starting date for yard waste. All the yard waste has to be inside containers or bags, and there, you cannot just pile it on the street, so please be aware of that. We have several projects out for bid. This is for contractors who might be interested. We have the green infrastructure projects, which is the parking lots in downtown, throughout downtown. The pre-bid meeting is going to be March 11th, and the bid opening is going to be March 26th. So please, if you have any interest, anybody, please pick up the plans from our office, DPW here in City Hall. ADA Sidewalk, the pre-bid meeting has taken place last month on the 26th. Bid opening is the same date, March 26th. So these are two big projects in there. Most of them are grant-funded. The first one is DRI-funded, the green infrastructure. The second one is DOT grant, and, or the mayor calls it Schumer money, Schumer projects.
Where it came from.
Yeah. So both two projects in there, total amount is about $8 million. So that's, and we have much more capital projects that are going to be implemented for water, for water line improvement, for intersection improvement. It's going to be tens of millions of dollars yet to be spent on capital projects. Savage Park Expansion, the project has to be delayed a little bit because of just more of, better way of presenting it to the bidders, and that will be taken care of, and hopefully in a couple of weeks, it will be out for bid again. And again, we expect construction to start, hopefully, in May, June, and continue through March next year, so we'll have the project completed. That's the Savage Park Expansion. And we had today in the paper, we had an ad for a job opening for Deputy Commissioner of Public Works. Chris Gross, he's been Deputy Commissioner for Water and Sewer for about four and a half years, working for us, and he decided that it's time for him to move on to a place that's closer to his home. You know, he doesn't, he doesn't really live in the city all his life, and his heart is in Westchester. And Chris, he leaves, you know, he's got a soft spot in my heart, because he started working as an engineer, junior engineer, when I was a principal with Clark Patterson. So he did most of his training under me when I was with Clark Patterson. That was in the 2000s, early 2000s. And I stole him from Clark Patterson. Clark Patterson were not too happy about it when I stole him from them, but now he goes to somewhere else. So, you know, it's really sad for me, because I knew him for many, many years, and he was a very effective deputy commissioner, and he's moving on to better things, and I wish him the best of luck.
Better things? What do you mean, better things?
Better position.
Well, all right.
Better position. Better position for his life. I mean, the same thing with Mike Mosher. Mike Mosher's, you know, Mike Mosher, he started under us in here. I was very happy with him. He moved into better things for himself. Brian Smith, the same thing. Those are very valuable people that work for us, and they have a special place in my heart, all three of them, really, and I wish them the very best, very best of luck. So the ad is in the paper, it's on our website. Any engineers who are looking for a position as Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, it's really a very, very ambitious, very active position in there, and very rewarding professionally, hopefully as well as financially. So please, check us out, check our ad in the paper, today's paper, or on our website. With that, if you have any questions for me.
Al McLeiner?
Commissioner, New York Rising, that bridge in Mahagan Avenue, is that still in the works, or do you know?
Yes.
We haven't heard anything on that in a while.
Yeah, I haven't updated you. I usually don't update you on all these projects, but because so many of them, my apologies if I missed some, yes. The design is almost completed by NV5. by NV5, and the focus is going to be on Grant Street, and they're replacing that culvert in there, which is in very bad shape. But yes, that's moving on.
What bridge? I didn't catch the bridge. What bridge did he say?
No, he was asking about New York Rising.
Manhattan Avenue. It was supposed to be in Manhattan Avenue, was the thought. Has that changed since then?
West Main Street.
West Main.
I'm sorry, I meant West Main, yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
No, no, West Main is still on.
You're talking about two different things.
Oh.
Because he said Manhattan Avenue. We don't have any grant for a bridge on Manhattan Avenue.
Yeah, no, I meant West Main Street, yeah.
West Main is still on, yeah, thank you, mayor. I missed that. West Main is still on, that's part of it, and Grand Street. Grand Street is in very bad shape, that culvert in there, and that will be part of the project. That's going to be the focus of New York Rising. West Main Bridge, Manhattan Brook Crossing, and the Draper Brook Crossing where Grand Street is.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
John?
I have nothing this evening.
Any questions for John? Mayor?
Good evening. I'd like to open with you, there's a couple resolutions tonight, or at least the one regarding M&amp;R Energy that I need to address with you. I think, John, I sent you an amended contract.
Yes.
M&amp;R is our consultant that's hired to do our energy purchasing, and we're hopefully renewing the contract for two years. And the two-year savings, I think, is about $135,000. It's up to about $67,000 a year. Should be in the latest contract that was submitted. I sent you the amended contract late this afternoon.
Yes, I got it.
Okay, you got it, okay. I just wanted to make sure on that. And then there's a second part to the M&amp;R. Apparently, there is a, not apparently, there will be, a solar farm, community solar out in South Centerville. And what M&amp;R is recommending to us is that we consider signing up for this community solar project. And that will result in additional savings to the city of about $13,000 in year one, and close to $10,000 a year for years two through five. We're looking to clear through city council and New York State Office of General Procurement Services to see how we go about this. Alex has reviewed the contract preliminarily and feels that it's something that we can do based on the information that's been submitted to us. So by the next meeting, we're going to probably make a request. Basically, all we do is sign up certain of our electrical counts, and we agree to buy power that they'll be providing through Orange and Rockland, to Orange and Rockland on the grid. So there's nothing we have to do other than bookkeeping on our end, but two things. One, it's good, solar power's good, and two is that we'll have an additional savings over and above the $67,000. So by the next meeting, we're hoping to have a resolution for you on that.
Excuse me, mayor, I did put it in there with approval of Corporation Council to approve that tonight.
No, no, that's the one thing. That's the $67,000. The second part is the community solar project.
Thank you.
And that would have to be, he's already given the verbal on it, but we're waiting for Alex to put it in writing, because we like to get things from our lawyers in writing, right, Alicia?
Yes.
As we do. So the second is, I'm sure you've had some feedback on it, both on social media and probably some email, is the sanitation plan that I submitted. It's been posted on social media. I've had meetings with the chairman, Mr. Drew Jean-François, and Jacob. This is just my proposal, as you know. There's a lot that has to be vetted out. We're hoping that the chairman will call for a public hearing or an informational public hearing. Not required, but I think it's necessary. We agreed at our last meeting. I would hope that you would set an hour aside for it at your committee meeting, and make sure it's well advertised so that we can get public input, and also encourage written comments. We've tried to address a lot of the issues on the social media already. Some issues are, some people think the smaller can should be 50 gallons rather than 65 gallons. There was some misinformation about the scanning, that we were going to go check people's garbage. No, the scanning is a, is scanning of the cans, to make sure that the cans are at the appropriate address. What would we do at holiday time? We would have additional pickup. What would we do for yard waste? We would continue to keep some of our old trucks, the back-end trucks, because A, we need to use them for our dumpsters, and B, we use them for yard waste. We could eventually get into a container if we want for yard waste, but I think at this time, we're not willing to buy the, buy an additional truck and go that way. I think, let's see how this thing goes. We've talked about routes on one-way streets. Some people have raised concerns. Not all trucks will be one man, one person. They'll have a smaller streets, or streets that require, or narrow streets, might require a second person onboard. Some of the other questions were about layoffs. There will be no layoffs. This will be reduced through attrition. Some people objected to reducing, quote, "union jobs." But I haven't had any negative feedback from the union even on this. You know, it's not, I understand they can come to a public hearing, but the feedback that I'm getting from city employees is that they know that this is backbreaking work, that especially in the wintertime, that we can structure this. You know, we're not inventing this, is what we're trying to point out to people, that this is done in many communities, not just down south. It's done in the northeast, Salem, Massachusetts, and other communities where the streets are much more narrow than us do it. It might require some changing of routes, but that'll be up to Jacob and his people to implement. The idea is, the plan is out there. The total cost, the initial capital outlay is well over $2 million. But through the attrition plan, we'll have an opportunity to recoup that money in the long term. Short term, there won't be a savings, because we're going to have to assume the debt. But this is the time to do the project, because we do need to invest in additional garbage trucks. So if we're going to invest in new trucks, we might as well get what we want and then move forward with it, based on some community input. There's a whole section on DMU. Some people mistook that the timing of placement of garbage pails, that applied strictly to the DMU. The existing times that are in the charter or in the code do not apply to the residential area. But the idea of having time limitations downtown is if a business or a building owner is going to put their garbage out, you don't want garbage cans sitting on the sidewalk all day in your downtown area. So the best thing I think people should do is start writing to you folks, to the aldermen. You can write to me, email, and we'll try to address your questions. We will then compose all of those questions and answers into one document that will be submitted for the record, and then at the end of the game, we can draft our own ordinance in accordance with the feedback and what's overall the best interest of the city. As I've stated, that the gallons, the cans are 95-gallon cans, one for recycling and one for municipal solid waste. Homes like mine that would require more should pay more, according to my plan that I submitted, an additional $100 per year for the additional can, because you're producing more garbage. There's no reason why a person, a two-family home, or two-person home should be paying more than the, that's going to produce less than one can of garbage than what my family produces on a weekly basis. So that's the proposal. I hope the people will participate in the feedback. And like I said, I'll try to address as many questions as I can on social media, or whatever mechanism you choose to send it, whatever form you send it into us. But we are going to make changes. One person asked about privatization. Why not privatization? I told them that Mr. Massey did have a plan and privatization that would have saved well over $1 million a year, but that's required to be bargained for with the union, and the union refused to bargain on that. They, so that was, the plan was dead on arrival. So we're moving into part two, which is this, and I don't think there's a third option. I don't think the status quo is a good option for us, because if you look at the injury reports, they continue to be a high percentage of injuries for the city. Comes from that department, a lot of times laid off, and time at work missed. But I think both the union and the employees and the residents will be happier, will have a cleaner city. We're going to get Sue, that's going to come up here next year, and Sue is going to say, "Everything is beautiful." No more pizza boxes floating down the street. And you see it yourself, on a windy day, especially like on recycling day, stuff is all over the, all over the streets, or animals rip open the bags. It's going to take a period of time to get acclimated to the new process, but it's not rocket science, and we'll be able to do it. We'll be able to make special exceptions at holiday time, when, you know, when the community has a bigger load of garbage to get rid of. We'll try to address everything in the plan, but maybe we've missed a few things. So we'd appreciate your feedback. The last thing is Corona, which is absolutely a national issue, but it's also a local preparedness issue. And it's not to be alarming to anyone, but we are getting questions on that also. And first of all, the, we've been posting links to different literature from both the governor's office and some stuff that has been prepared, provided by the police department, and I don't know what the sources of theirs, it's from FEMA, on how to protect yourself, prepare yourself for these types of potential pandemics. And that preparedness is the key to, and learning different protocols, the washing the hands, you've heard it all a million times on television. We are going to be adding some signage to all municipal buildings. The signage is going to be similar to what you see when you go into a hospital, about if you, if you have the following symptoms, please do not enter the building. There'll be a contact number for the police department. The police department can meet them outside the building and see what their needs are, and will try to address their needs. If it's a matter of getting a birth certificate or something, we can do it, similar to what they're doing in other parts of the, in other parts of the world, like in South Korea, they're actually doing screening in parking lots. So there's no reason why we can't have somebody get the documentation, bring it into, we bring it into City Hall, and try to accommodate their needs if they have any of these symptoms. Most importantly, though, we also want to protect our employees. So we've changed some City Hall protocols. For example, inspectors, if there's a rental housing inspection that's going to be done, and there's any sign of any type of illness, we're going to postpone the inspection. There's no urgency that it'd be done, you know, today. It can be done, you know, four weeks from now. We're also looking at the possibility, if something does happen where schools are closed, how we would possibly flex some schedules for people who have childcare issues. So basically, we want to reassure the people that we have been meeting and discussing what we can do locally. Obviously, we can't ban travel from China or from Italy or anywhere else in the world locally, but what we did do is we've been meeting, the chief has spoken directly to, like, emergency housing, the warming center, the senior center, the library, school district, and putting together any type of emergency plan, or how they're addressing their needs. As we know that some public establishments have higher frequency of people who don't have a home, for example, and how are they addressing that within their confines of their responsibility of their building. So we are, what we wanted to do was reassure the public of Middletown that we are looking at what we can do locally. We don't have the expertise or the access to make decisions, nor would we, that would, you know, health department decisions. Friday, there's a conference call with all municipal leaders throughout the county with the county emergency preparedness department. Myself, Chief Lewis, Chief Iwanchu, and Jacob will be on that call also, and I think we're going to be inviting some other members of the city government to join us. And we'll prepare some questions if they're not answered in the presentation that is made by the county. But we are just asking people to be patient. If they, if they need something urgently from City Hall and they do show symptoms, please call, please call the number on the signs, call my office, and we'll try to make arrangements. We're providing gear, we're providing hand sanitizer in all vehicles, just little things that you normally don't do on a regular basis. But with this thing, you never know where this is going to go, so we want to be prepared, and we didn't want to wait till the last minute for it. Any questions?
Alvin Massey?
Mayor, I know that you and I spoke today. We have a local physician, Dr. Rem Basri, who happens to be a member of the fire department also, and he had a little video on Mid-Hudson, and it might not be a bad idea. Would you just speak on that?
Yeah, midhudsonnews.com. Dr. Basri has posted about a four-minute video, a little tutorial on what to do, basic, common sense stuff. And he added a little bit of his own flavor to it. So I encourage you to watch it. I don't, you know, I can't swear to the validity of it, but he's a doctor. He's a medical doctor, and he can give you some advice. But also, go to the links on our website. We want to make sure people have the appropriate information to make their decisions for them, what's in the best interest of them and their families. We're trying not to have any gatherings, like, one thing we spoke with the fire chief about, if there's any volunteer department gatherings that are scheduled, to postpone them. And I don't believe there, anything was scheduled, but, but, and then we'll deal with things as they come in. But at least we're prepared that if something does happen, we're prepared to react to it in that manner. So including, you know, a school in the Bronx was closed today. So what would happen to, if school was closed for a week or two weeks? What happens to the workforce? You know, how do you, how do you address those things? That's, Chief Iwanchu had raised that issue. So we try to address every, everything, but if you have questions, the council, and you like us to try to find out the answers to, or ask a question to the county health department on Saturday, or Friday, please forward it to us, and if we consider it to be something that we can't get, we don't have the answer to, we'll try to get the answer for you. Any other questions?
Alvin Kleiner?
Yes. Mayor, going back to the M&amp;R Energy, you said we wanted to approve, because it says the resolution to approve an agreement with M&amp;R Energy Resources to secure energy costs for 2020 and participate in a community solar agreement upon Corporation Council approval. That's the way it's written.
Oh, that's fine. Then Alex must, did Alex draft the resolution?
No.
Then Alex, what?
I talked to him about it.
You did? Okay, then if Alex has approved it, then with John, then that's fine with me. But if he hasn't approved it, then I'll veto that. But I'm sure he, as long as he's approved it, we can move ahead with it. That's fine with me. I'm all for it. I don't see any downside in reading the material. It's just that, all he did was give me a phone call and told me he was okay with it, and I was hoping for something in writing. But if, I'll take, I'll take John's word at it, that Alex did convey that to him, and the resolution is fine to go ahead with.
Okay, very, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Your marks of alderman, Alvin Massey.
Thank you. Walk Hill Fire Company, again, you guys just to the forefront. Thank you very much. You outdo yourselves each year. Really appreciate what you've done this year and in the past, but very special this year. Lions Club, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Alvin Tobin?
I'd just like to join the chorus of everybody reminding people to take the census. It's coming out soon. It affects our school districts, affects our government, affects our representation. So please make sure you fill out your census. Thanks, I'd like to thank the Walk Hills for a generous donation. Let's bring sky home, I agree with that. If you're hungry this Saturday, the Lions Club is doing a spaghetti dinner from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Hoffman's Lodge, if you're still, if you're hungry on Saturday. Thank you.
Alvin Green?
Thank you. Yeah, Alicia Mendoza family, I mean, really, our hearts are with you, and our thoughts are always with you, you know, from the memorial on, you know, we've certainly never forgotten, and we will bring sky home. It's, you know, definitely something I know that this community will do what we do best and come together for you. So let's bring sky home. Thanks.
Alvin Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to remind the group, the legislative committee will meet as soon as the administration's ready. We have the zombie homes issue, the double utility poles issue, and the plumbers issue. So as soon as mayor and council are ready, I'll schedule that. The garbage truck issue, we have discussed it for close to two years. I had a resident, as recently as two days ago, tell me the top six reasons that this can't possibly work for her and her environment and her lifestyle. I told her that nothing she said to me had not been discussed. But we'll still have miles to go before we sleep, because people outside this room are hearing it for the first time. They will raise the same questions we raised about one-way streets, and narrow, and snow, and how many cans, and all that. So, but hopefully we'll move forward. and all that. So, but hopefully we'll move forward. I know Alden Kleiner will remind us, we're gonna revisit the deer conversation. We did that five years ago. I'll let him talk about that. As far as the firefighters, thanks for all you do. Obviously, this month had things that were a little more challenging than others. So thank all the people that keep us safe on that score. Also, we had CDA, we had our audit. And I think CDA has been a very good project in the last two years. We put a lot of good things into our community. So I wanna thank the mayor, and Maria, and Don, and the two Jeans, well, at least one of them, and Patty for keeping, I'll let you figure out which one, and Patty for keeping things going so well. Coronavirus, in my day job, I got a notice today from the American Veterinary Medical Association, that there is a dog in the world, in Hong Kong, that tested positive for this virus. So we, as veterinarians, will be part of that conversation. Can a dog get infected, be an in-apparent carrier, give it to somebody else? Can you give it to your dog or your cat? These are things that I get to think about in the next month or two, which will be provocative, I'm sure. And as far as the Mendoza's, it's a bittersweet evening this evening. I understand that. But God bless you all and all that you do, and let's hope for rapid success. Thank you.
Alden Rakasun?
Good evening. I'll keep it short and simple, but I just wanna say to the Walk Hills, you guys really set the example on what it means to take care of your community. It's always engine six at the front. And I just wanna say thank you to you, and I'm sure the Mendoza family echoes that sentiment. Ask for your family. Well, my kids go to school with your kids. They knew of Sky, and I just wanna say that, you know, this community sets itself apart, and I think through what the city is going to do tonight and begin to do, is that we will show you just what makes Middletown different from everywhere else in the world, is that we take care of each other. And what, this trust, you know, if you wanna get it on social media, I know that this community will rise up and will be in their GoFundMe, and we step up, we take care of each other, and we'll take care of Sky, and we'll bring her back. And that's all I have tonight.
Alden Kleiner?
Thank you. I want to also thank Maria, and the mayor, and Don Paris, and everyone with the Community Development Agency. When you're in the audit committee, and the words you hear are clean and transparent, and that everything balances, I thank everyone for the hard work. The census, as Alderman Tobin says, I believe it starts March 12th. So it's important for people to pay attention to that. We need to all get counted, and we need to have everyone get counted. So help us all you can with that. Thank you to the Lions Club, as usual. That's gonna be, it'll be fun to watch that project come along. New Walk Hills, of course. I'm sure Middletown will bring Sky home, because that's the kind of thing Middletown does. So I'm waiting to see people, everybody step up. And thank you, everyone, for your effort. I wish Chris Gross well in his next endeavors. I think he did a good job for the city, and sorry to see him leave. We have a second ward constituents' meeting. That'll be next Monday, March 9th, at 7:00 PM, right here. So come and bring us all your questions, and bring us all your ideas. And now, a week from tonight, on March 10th, also right here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM, we'll be having the DEC Wildlife Specialist in Deer Overpopulation. And she'll be coming here to give a presentation on the latest from the DEC. We had, Kevin Clark was our Region Three Wildlife biologist, and that really was five and a half years ago when he came. So we'll see if there's any new ideas, and what, and what the latest thinking is. And it should be an interesting evening. So, and Sunday starts daylight savings time, so set your clocks ahead. Thank you.
Alden John Francois?
Yes. Good evening. I would personally like to thank the mayor and Commissioner of DPW and Common Council, President Miguel Rodriguez. We've been talking about this project for, for the longest. It's, it's a good thing to see it's coming to fruition. The mayor's been very, very aggressive about this project to move it forward. So it's a good thing to see. Our DPW committee meeting was gonna take place in March 17th, at this chamber, at 7 o'clock. We recommend everyone to come to the meeting. Just in case you cannot attend the meeting, please, like the mayor mentioned, visit our website and give us your feedback, your comments or concern. It'll be very appreciated. It should be a good thing. Thank you. As far as Sky, as, and I know the city of Middletown will step up. It's just a matter of when Sky's gonna be home, but she'll definitely be home soon. Thank you.
Alden Burr?
I agree with all my aldermen on all their comments. I think the community will come up big for Sky. And on the latter note, you move it into a great ward, the first ward. Mr. Massey represents that award. I really appreciate you moving it to our ward. Walk Hills, you guys are phenomenal. I'm a volunteer on a different company, but you guys do the best. You know, you gave to, to donations over the last couple of years, now a big one to the Mendoza family. And we wish you, thank you very much for all your, what you do for the city of Middletown, and the Lions Club also. Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanna echo all the councilmen. The best company, the Walk Hills, ever. The Walk Hills are all volunteers, so if anybody wants to join and do what they're doing, so great, come out and reach out to them. All volunteers, all living in the city of Middletown, all serve the city of Middletown for free. And they're doing it all the time. Sky, it was close to home. My daughter and Sky are the same age. They went to the same school. They know each other. So it not only did hit our community, but it hit us personally. So when the mayor brought this to myself and Alden Massey, we said, "Absolutely. We are committed, and we wanna get behind and bring her home. We'll, we'll work with builders. We'll work with anybody that takes, and we'll, we'll reach out to them and make sure we'll bring her home." New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, to approve the New York State Legislature and the New York Senate to extend the authority of the city of Middletown to sell or pledge as collateral for a loan, some or all of delinquent tax liens held by the city until December 31st, 2021.
Responsible Alden Massey, second by Alden Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Green, to authorize the closing of streets for the Middletown Little League Parade on Saturday, April 18th, 2020, starting at 12:00 noon.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Green, second by Alden Rakasun. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Green, to authorize the treasurer to transfer $1,402 within the police department's 2020 budget to cover the cost of new computer parts and printers to replace those in disrepair.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Rakasun, second by Alden Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez. Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Kleiner, to prohibit food trucks in all zoning districts except for ice cream trucks, which will require a license from the city clerk.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Kleiner, second by Alden Rakasun. Any discussion? Alden Kleiner?
I, I do wanna reassure people that the fire departments, and there's an exemption, an exception for city-sponsored events, so they will still be able to sell from their truck.
Any city event, doesn't matter. Anybody, city sponsored events.
City-sponsored events. Okay.
Anyone else? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden, I'm sorry, by Alden and John Francois, to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement from the county board for the stop DWI traffic safety program.
Resolution sponsored by Alden John Francois, second by Alden Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez. Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Burr, to approve the transfer of 52 Broad Street and authorize the mayor to sign all documents pertaining to this transfer pertaining, prepared by Corporation Council.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Burr, second by Alden Massey. Any discussion? Alden Kleiner?
I just, since we've talked about lawyers and wanting to get everything, every eye dotted, I just wanted to point out that, that reading it, the resolution and all the discussions says transfer for the fee of $1. But in the actual language that's written, it says, "In consideration of $10." So I, I...
Change it to $1.
Make a motion to correct that.
We'll change it to $1.
Says a dollar in the resolution. Are you reading the deed, or the?
The, the actual legal document that's scanned in that needs to be signed and witnessed thereof, and already the first part, the second part, and it's, it's like the deed, the legal document for the actual transference says $10. I just wanna make sure everything agrees. I'm sure the $9 difference is not important, but they'll, just get, so we get the language matching.
The resolution we have up here does not have the $10.
Says?
It says $1.
The resolution. He's talking about the deed that Alex made out, which is right here. I don't see, and...
I have a copy if you wanna see.
Amend the resolution to $10.
Yeah.
I'll give you the other. Okay. You good?
We'll do the amendment.
You wanna make a motion to amend?
You guys got $9 here?
Yeah. Amend the resolution to match this, so amend it to, instead of $1, say $10.
Right. Amend it. Alden Kleiner, seconded by Alden Massey. Alden Massey, to amend to $1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, back to resolution. Any other discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, to approve the JCO agreement for the wastewater treatment plant through March 2021.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, second by Alden John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson, to authorize the chief of police to sign an agreement from three, I'm sorry, March 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2020, between the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the city of Middletown regarding the reimbursement of expenses in joint operations.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson, second by Alden Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez. Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by the old woman, Ram Kasun, to approve an agreement with M&R Energy Resources Corporation to secure an energy cost for 2020 and participate in the community solar agreement upon Corporation Council approval.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Rakasun, seconded by Alden Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be ordered, the claims be adjusted, and city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for the payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, second by Alden Green. Roll.
Ram Kasun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?